All right, I will repeat. I believe we have myself from Bristol, Lori from Lori Rotella from Nogatuck, Margus from Plymouth, Ginny from Shelton and Bob Nearney from Waterbury. And again, is there anybody that I've been? That I've missed? Hearing nothing, and I think what I will do next is according to our agenda, that would be the Pledge of Allegiance. So I would ask everybody to repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
To the flag of the United States
Of America
America and to the Republic
For which it stands
One nation Under God Indivisible
With liberty
Liberty Wrong. You know, since we have stopped meeting in person and we do this on Zoom, I find that to be the most difficult thing that we do. All right, the next would be the roll call, but I think we've already covered that. And I don't know if we have anybody from the public online tonight.
We do not, Mr. Chair.
All right. So we're going to move right, right on to administrative items. The next item, number six, is adoption of minute, minute, meeting minutes, December 5th, 2023. I'm assuming that everybody's had a chance to take a look at those. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to make to that? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Aye.
We have one, well, we have one abstention. The, the motion to adopt the minutes is is passed. The next thing we have on, I apologize for my voice, I don't know what happened. Is the referrals report, I believe that may be you, Savannah, or is it you, Ricky?
It is Emily, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Emily.
I was just counting your quorum. I think that you need seven to vote on the minutes. Because I was looking at our unexcused answers.
You're right.
We don't have a quorum tonight.
Hello? Hi.
Who do we have here?
You're expecting, let me, let me ask Mark to pick up the phone, I'm in a Zoom meeting, okay? Hold on. That's okay.
We, we have five, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and, and you're absolutely right. You do not have a quorum.
I'm, I've muted Commissioner Hardger for the, the moment. But Emily, can you? And does anyone have any questions about the referral report? It should have been included in your packet.
I, no, I've looked at it. And I'm going to ask the commissioners, have you had a chance to look at the report?
Yes, I have.
And I really did not get that, would you? Please repeat it?
I, I reviewed it, this is Lori Rotella.
Thank you, Lori. Ginny? You have to unmute Ginny.
I scanned the minutes of the report.
The report, okay. And Rick, obviously, has ready to see produce it. Bob, have you had a chance, you have to unmute?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and we have Curtis now. I see. Curtis, have you had a chance to review the report?
Yes, I have.
All right, very good. All right, moving along then. We have a correspondence, is there any correspondence, do you know of? I, I don't know who to ask, Ginny? Or Emily, or Savannah Nicole?
I, I can answer the question, Mr. Chair. No, the only correspondence you have is the memo that we provided you yesterday. And then Emily, do you mind going two slides forward for me? I believe it should be three, my apologies. Oh, there you go, I know what I was looking for.
All right.
We will be sharing this with you via correspondence that we'll touch upon later in the meeting. But the, besides the memorandum and this, there's no correspondence for the commission. All right, Emily, you want to go back? Mr. Chair, um, with that, we, I, I can talk about the, I can continue the RPC discussion if that would so please the
Yes.
Chairman of the Commission.
Please do.
So, we've been having this conversation for a few meetings now. And ultimately, we were directed by a request from our executive director who's here today to examine the effectiveness of the commission. I sent the memo to everyone yesterday. Our intention is to put this memorandum before the NVCOG board at the April 19th meeting. However, we wanted to make sure that the Regional Planning Commission saw it before that. And we are both here today to answer any questions, comments, concerns that you may have about the recommendations that are being made.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions? Or comments that they would like to make about the report?
But I can, um,
Who, who are we talking to now? I, I've lost everything.
Ginny was about to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to mention that I thought the report was pretty straightforward. It would be a shame for the Regional Planning Commission to disband. And it was interesting to find out that there has not been anything in regulations unless I'm misinterpreting it since 2015. So just leads back to the question that I, I guess we had mentioned at a previous meeting as to what exactly is the purpose of our commission? And it, I don't recall us ever bringing forward a project that would affect the whole region. I think part of the issues too is that our our municipalities are very diverse. And what we might require down in Lower North Texas Valley isn't something that isn't even in someone's wheelhouse in another part of the municipality group, so. But maybe it has served its purpose. But that's the only thing I could say right now.
All right, thank you, Ginny. Anybody else? Yes, Lori.
We have been talking about this for quite some time now, and I'm actually in favor of this. I feel we're not reaching a quorum. And it should be easy to get a quorum now since we're on Zoom and we don't have one. So maybe if we do disband and reorganize into different groups, planners and staff and then commissioners, maybe it'd be more effective. But I am in favor of the, the proposal before us.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else, please?
Well, I guess I, I would say, Mr. Chairman, it's Bob.
It's Bob.
I, um, I, I find value in, in us getting together every, every two months and discussing on what's going on in the region. And maybe more so as it relates to the dissemination of information from, from the COG itself. I, I find that to be, be very helpful. I, I mean, if, if the group is reconstituted differently somehow, or maybe set up into smaller groups, I guess that's something to consider, but I, I, I personally see value. And yeah, albeit with the frustration of getting quorums together, I, I still see a lot of value in, in, in our meetings, but I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Well, I have some
I do want to say one more thing. I, I was not saying I didn't find value in the meetings. I do, but I think it would be more valuable to split up. I don't want to make it sound like this was not worth coming to. Obviously, I'm here every other month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, my feelings. I, I agree with Rick in his report. And I think there is a, a case to be made to relinquish the authority of the Regional Planning Commission. But however, I have to consider the people, the commissioners who have attended on a religious basis and have had a great deal of input into the discussions that we have, letting us know what's, what's going on in our communities. So I'm not sure whether I'm asking Emily or Savannah or Rick to respond to this. Is there any way that we can find an opportunity for those of us who have had a vested interest in the Regional Planning Commission to continue to contribute?
I, I'd be happy to field that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Rick.
And, and if you'd just all indulge me for a minute, I know you've all read the, the memorandum that, that I asked that they prepare. We've been having this discussion with various iterations in this group going back to 2015 when we created the merged COG. And the statutes changed, I think they were adopted in 2013 and went into effect in 2014, 2015. So the regional planning commissions were eliminated when we went from three versions of, of regional planning organization. We had, we had what were known as regional planning agencies. We had councils of governments and we had councils of elected officials. And each region could choose what model they wanted. And the discussion with the state was they wanted to bring more power and more resources and more money directly to the, the COG, to the regions. And the only way that the state would agree to do that or wanted to do that was if the chief elected officials were sitting at the table making decisions about spending that money and adopting those documents. So that, that's how we ended up with one model for councils of governments that made everything else under advisory. Now, some of our sister agencies chose to abolish their regional planning, their commission meetings at that point, if they, and some of them hadn't even been observing them previously. Ginny and I have a history, we were both at the old Valley Regional Planning Agency and then Valley Council of Governments when things changed. So the concern was that we needed to be effective and useful. We have on the transportation side of the house, just to give an example, on the transportation side of the house, we have something called the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee. So these are your town engineers, public works officials, sometimes economic development officials who, who meet on the, the technical review of transportation and transit projects. What we envisioned for this is a similar model where the town planners, town planning staff would meet during the day on a regular basis to exchange regular information about regional planning and about local planning issues. We would like to continue having the commission members have, have opportunity to meet. And, and it's not to say that some commission members wouldn't attend the daytime professional staff meetings. And we would envision those people, your staff in your towns, disseminating that information back to you, particularly on the referral process. I think that's, that's the one specific process that's in statute. And SN, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the one statute that still refers to a regional planning commission?
Yes, it's a matter, but they're referenced for the zoning and planning referral processes.
Right. And we're, I mean, we believe it's an artifact that was, that was just not properly cross-referenced when they did the statutes. Only place anywhere in the Connecticut general statutes, the words regional planning commission exist any longer. Now, there's a local responsibility on the referral process between the towns who, who generate the referral and the towns who are potentially impacted by a regional referral from another town. And you still play your role as a local commission in that regard. But we, you know, we would be moving that information through your professional staff and back to you. We'd certainly always be available to you. We'd certainly invite commissioners to attend those meetings. And then we, right now, you're, you're scheduled to meet, I think, six times a year as commission. And what we're thinking is there would be two to four meetings of different types during the year for commissioners to share information, to, to get training and to, and to be updated on, on the way this stuff. You would still certainly get your, your referrals with all the background documents and be able to, to weigh in on those items as you saw fair. But it, I've been frustrated, I visited this in 2015, we decided to stick with this model. And sometime in 2018, I think we re-raised it again because we couldn't get, we couldn't get attendance, we couldn't get a quorum. And one of the, one of the more fundamental problems I have as the agency director advising the, the board is that the foundational documents of the region are not being passed through this board for review and recommendation, many times because there's just not a quorum to do it. So we would, we would like to pass those documents, like the regional plan of conservation and development and other plans through your town staff, through your professional staff. Certainly, we, again, we would be happy to visit the towns, meet with the commissions individually, or for a particular issue, bring you all together to talk about a, a document. But we want to get a recommendation out of town staff that we can bring to the full COG board for these documents. So that's it, that, that's another consideration on, on our part. In, in 2018, we decided to amend the rules to, of what constitutes a quorum based upon attendance. That wasn't intended to be a permanent rule change, that was intended to get us over the hump until the commission was able to get a regular quorum attending of the full body. And it just never happened. You know, I have very, very few meetings where there's actually a legal, what would be, be considered sectorally illegal quorum of the 19th town commissioners. So with that, I asked the staff to prepare a new memo, to go back and look at it, to, do the deeper statutory research, make sure we, we were looking at all the right language and all the right roles and responsibilities. And we're bringing it to you first before we bring it anywhere else so we could address any concerns and, and comments. So I, I, I hope that I gave you sort of a broader picture of it and, and how we envisioned this, but I'm happy to answer any questions at this point if there are more.
Rick, has there ever been a one-on-one kind of conversation with each town? The administration, whoever is the, the head of, of the town, just to, to let them be aware of the fact that there is no one from their town attending. And it's, it's holding us all back. And another thing is, it may be that because of the fact that we don't have ownership under, of anything, that people might feel, well, what do I have to go to a meeting for? All, all we're going to do is, you know, talk about some things that are very mundane.
True enough, true enough. I mean, I, I, I can't say that I wouldn't feel the same way myself if I had lots of night meetings and places, places to, to be and things to do. I think that, that it's, it's difficult to hold a commission together given the, given the statutory setup, the, the scheme that's been devised by the state for this. And I do think professional staff works better in this regard, in, in terms of exchanging information. And I think trying to get it to the commissioners through that means would be more effective. And we'd probably get better feedback from the towns who aren't sending commissioners. So to answer your first question, not only do we not have towns that don't attend, we have commissions that haven't made appointments in, in a number of towns. We have discussed this with the CEOs. We go to them individually on, at least an annual basis to tell them about vacancies or attendance issues. And when, whenever municipal elections are held, we update all of our, our town contacts. We go through that whole process again. And, you know, unfortunately, it just hasn't really gotten anywhere. Part, part of the problem is that it's a two-step process in most towns where the commission has to develop the candidate. And then the CEO in most towns has to approve the candidate. The way, the way it's done in many towns is they'll develop, the commission will develop list the three people, submit them to, to the chief elected official, let the chief elected official pick one to be the representative. And, and that seems to work in some places, but it also means that neither one of them really see ownership of the process. The, the commission sees it as the mayor's appointment, the mayor sees it as well, it's, it's planning commission business. And in some cases, and in some towns who shall remain nameless, nobody does anything. So, but we do address it with them. I, I would love to have commission members attend. I know it, it'll be more difficult during the day and but I, I think we can, we can arrange a sufficient number of meetings, four meetings a year with information and educational opportunities and discussion of, of trends and, and regulations, I think, is probably what you're getting right now. You know, you have it scheduled for six, you probably only have four real meetings on an annual basis. So I, I'm trying to not see this as a change other than the business that we have to conduct, we're going to be able to conduct with professional staff. Because they can come during the day, they're on the clock, they're going to come to the meeting, they're going to participate with their, with their counterparts from other towns and their colleagues, as well as regional staff. And the model works really well for us on the transportation side, which is why I think it might work well here.
Because of the fact that I would think that the majority of the top elected official in each town attends the NVCOG meeting, they don't see us as the way to bring their concerns to NVCOG because they're going to these meetings anyways.
Right, and, and in most cases, they're talking to their town planner. If they have a concern or an issue or a specific issue. There are towns where the chief elected official keeps the, at least the chair of the local commission close in the loop and expresses their issue, their, their concerns there. But I think for the most part, the CEOs are working through their, their, um, their local planning and zoning officials. I, I would say my last discussion with the board, and again, it was pre-COVID 2018, 2019, something like that, was that they, they would be happy either way. They didn't want to upset anyone, but they also didn't realize until we, we brought it to them in 2018 that the commissions don't really, the regional commission doesn't really exist, the structure doesn't exist in statute anymore. And it doesn't really have any power. It's just, it's just an advisory, it's an advisory board that, you know, in a perfect world, the CEOs, you know, these people have lots on their plate, they run their own cities, we try to make it as easy as possible for them to make decisions about transportation projects and brownfield spending and economic development investments that come before us. But they are often looking for advice to know that, oh, my, my town staff already reviewed this, they weighed in on this at a prior meeting, and I'm getting a recommendation that, that's been vetted. So I, I, I think they would feel more comfortable with that process, although I don't think I'd even want to say, you know, get rid of the commission, because they like all of you, especially those of you who are here, I mean, you're the ones attending. I, I, I think there's a reluctance to, to say, oh, no, no, get rid of, get rid of the RPC and, and let's go with the town planners group. So, um, that, I, I mean, and that's, that's really why we're here, we want to talk through that, we want to see what your, your take is on it before we go back to the mayor's. We'd like to go in April with the memo and maybe action following that, but it doesn't have to be on that schedule, it can be later if, if there's still more discussion that takes place.
Anybody else have something they would like to offer this? This moment? Well, Kurt, I mean, Rick, again, I'm going to say my concern is for all of the people that you see here now. Because these are the people that have been most involved in Nogatuck Valley Regional Planning. And I, I certainly want to see an opportunity for everybody here to have another role to play. It, if it's not in regional planning, you know, you mentioned something about inviting regional planning commissioners to other meetings, that would be, that would be wonderful. I, I really do understand where you're coming from. But I, I, I feel badly for everybody that has worked so hard to keep this thing going. I know we have a problem with attendance or quorum. That's, that's, that's been since I've joined the Regional Planning Commission. And I don't know the answers to how to get that changed, but it is what it is. So I don't know that there's any real further discussion. I, I am going to support this recommendation. And I would like to thank every single person that has attended tonight.
We lost your audio.
David, you're muted.
Yeah.
Keep pushing the S to unmute.
All right, are we good? All right, so I, I would like to personally thank Lori and Ginny and Kurt and Bob. And who else have I missed here? Let's see, Margus. You know, you, you people have really been the lifeblood of, of this. And I truly appreciate you. I, it's been an honor to have served as chairman for this. And I don't think I have anything else to say. So we can't take a vote? Because we don't have a quorum? So I guess what, what we'll do is move on to the roundtable. For maybe what, the last time?
Well, I, actually, I don't, I don't know if it'll be the last time, I don't know how quickly and when your next meeting is scheduled for. There may be some overlaps still.
Not, not May, the next meeting will be June.
Be June, okay. I'll have to talk to Savannah Nicole about, about how that schedule might work out for that. And we'll have to come up with a process for sending your information, keeping you involved. SN, were you planning to, to schedule commissioner meetings right away?
Yeah, and I can, I can, if, if it pleases Mr. Chair and the commission, if we go to the NVCOG update, I can talk about that really briefly because I think it addresses part of your concern, Mr. Chairman, and then I can answer Rick's question as well.
Please do.
We, we heard you, and I, I want to make that clear that the time that we've spent over the last few months engaging in this conversation, I don't want to not see options for commissioners. And I'm very excited for Commissioner Hardger and the city of Shelton's bus tour, and I hope that you will all be in attendance. Emily and I are, are excited to represent NVCOG there. But to your question of what's for commissioners, what's going to ensure? But um to your question of what's for commissioners, what's going to ensure um that you can still come together, that you can still meet? And so what we talked about in the proposal, and and I even liked Rick's suggestion of of increasing that, we wanted to think about what you need, what are you required to do, because that looks different than what our commissioners or our land use staff are required to do. So you'll get this um after our meeting, so it'll come tomorrow, but we're holding our first, to Commissioner Harger's point about we, we're one region, we like to hold things in Waterbury as often as we can, that is our our central city. But um we know that sometimes an event in the lower valley might be easier for commissioners in that area to attend. We know that the same thing goes for our north, our eastern boundary. So we're partnering with the town of Cheshire to hold of our first, what we hope to do, one to two times a year, pizza and planning event. And so what this is, it's two hours to come together in person. There's gonna be fifteen minutes for the town of Cheshire to highlight what they're working on. Fifteen minutes for us to talk about their project, a plan, initiative, get commissioner feedback. And then what we'll be doing at this event is site plan review. So to Rick's point about connecting with your staff, we talked to the Cheshire Town Planner and said, hey, what do your commissioners need? What's the training that's gonna support them the best? And what we heard from Cheshire was is they'd like a site plan review on. We're hearing that Southbury would like to see Robert's rules and meeting procedure. Um and so we're starting to to plan out these events where um we don't just want it to be, come get trained for an hour. We want you to bump shoulders. I think that you were able to attend Chairman White, the Waterbury.
Yes.
Land use training, and I'm not sure if you saw on the table, but one of our planners who's not here today, she made something called a braggy breakfast. And there were little prompts that were put out on the table for everybody to encourage. Hey, what's something that your commission's proud of? What's something that you're challenging, you're facing, that's a challenge? So we still want to stimulate exactly what you're talking about. And we're committed to ensuring that at the end of the day, no one in our region has to worry about not achieving um their training requirements. So we see that as one model. And then to what Rick's talking uh about as additional meeting settings, I'd be more than happy to consent, continue to brainstorm within our organization about what that could look like. Um I really see the staff one being during the day. And then I I just will note, I I come to commissions as requested. I was in in Nuggetuck yesterday with Lori and their planning commission. Not everyone here uses me in that sort of way, but um that's what we're here for, that's what our staff is here for. And um I'd be more than happy to brainstorm about more frequent correspondence that we send to your land use staff that ends up on your planning commission, um planning and zoning commission, zoning commission agendas that updates you as to what we're doing, as to what's going on, um and continuously puts out that, hey, do you need something? Hey, you want us to come? Hey, do you have any calls? So I just wanna, when you say what's for us, this is what we envision. We envision more of these opportunities. We envision continuing to send our land use briefs, continuing to increase our white papers and the resources we provide the region. We just really see your land use staff as a conduit to helping us make those connections.
Nicole, uh Savannah Nicole, thank you very much. And um I I think we're all in favor of anything that would advance uh our work.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
What I think is important is that we get at the local level some kind of synopsis and analysis of all the different zoning bills that are proposed every year as soon as that session starts and and those bills are, have been filed. I had, I was invited to attend the I I guess it's the West cog one, that is the lower Freeville County. They had the, someone on the commission had seen the newspaper report of how we had denied uh an eight thirty G in Pine Rock Park section of Shelton. And uh we're being sued for that as we expected. So they wanted to know some things about that, and I was shocked at the amount of material that they were given from um among, and thi- this is all the, these are just the chairs of the zoning commissions in all those towns. And that um really to when you hear some of the stuff that had been proposed, you just say to yourself, oh, my gosh. This is serious stuff, and and that's where I think staff can really be of assistance to all of us in the uh in the nineteen municipalities. Because if you ever go and on the state's website and you look at a bill and there's pages and pages and pages of stuff, you lose yourself after a while, and you have no idea what the heck you're reading and what the whole intent is and um the implications of things. That's where I would say for sure that no matter what municipality you're in, these things are gonna affect us all, and we need to know right from the beginning, what are the implications of all of the proposed bills? Yeah, not every single one of them, not even close to uh a certain number will be passed, they'll die in committee, or they'll will not make it out by the date that they have to be referred. But um it's, that's, that's the kind of stuff that I know I don't have time to do, is sit down and and look at all this stuff. I rely on my two-state reps to sort of keep me posted and uh but and every swap in was a newspaper article that has to do with something, but um other than that, it's it's hard to understand what is going on each legislative session.
If I might just address that for a second. So, yeah, we, we have a legislative committee and we provide the legislative updates and reports to the CEOs. They get them by email and then they get them at the board meetings on a monthly basis. They, they obviously also, the towns belong to CCM and or COST. And that's where most of that comes from. The West cog situation's a little different. They're involved informally, I guess I should say, with the group uh C two one sixty nine strong, I think it's called. Which, which is you know, they they spend a lot of time, they're a nonprofit that spends a lot of time diving into bills that they oppose. I I I've yet to see them support a bill. So we wouldn't be distributing information from a nonprofit like that, that's an advocacy group with a specific point of view, we would, we would not be distributing that information. Our, our cog does not take political positions unless the board does. Uh the board has to vote to take a, a uh political position on on legislation. We don't get, we don't do that as staff. And uh you know, it's just a very different cog. West cog is, is two regions, two MPOs, and uh a very different uh leadership structure there, so.
If there is a summary that you're supplying to the CEOs, it needs to be passed down along to the uh zoning commissions.
Yeah, it won't just be zoning laws though, it'll be, it's everything. We track everything, lot of labor, labor agreements.
And I can understand that, that is the stuff that the CEOs would definitely need to know. But if a portion of that, if there's anything related to zoning, that's what we're, we're on the eight ball because we don't have that information.
Yeah, I I I think, I think we can find a way to 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 work with that, work with um uh Jack and Drew to have, to have SN get the specific information for uh land use. And then, and then we'll get that. We'll find a way to do it.
Thank you.
I'll also add, though, that we do send legislative summaries at the end that you, everyone receives. They have gone to all of the commissions, they have been sent to your staff to share with you, and we've been doing that at least at the bare minimum since twenty twenty one. So we've written legislative summaries for the Cannabis Act, we wrote one for Public Act twenty one twenty nine. You all received the twenty twenty three land use brief that outlined every single planning, zoning commissioner, land use commissioner, or blight focused, um a bill that was approved. So I understand Commissioner Harger, that's not a proactive um response to it, but we most certainly are making sure that the information, once things have been implemented, are being sent to you appropriately.
Yeah, it's it's just that that's after the fact. If there is a bill that's proposed and there's a public hearing coming up, how am I supposed to know?
Yeah, and I go ahead, Rick.
No, no, I, as I said earlier, we tried to stay out of the politics of of government at our end. So as I said, uh what she referred to, we actually tell you, give you assistance in how to implement statutes that have been passed. That's what we see our mission as, and that's what the board sees our mission as. We've been told very specifically, we don't take political positions or provide um information like that. Now, that's not to say that if we have our own analysis of the bill, if we've been asked to track a bill, and we've, we provide an analysis of that, that we can't pass it on to you, we certainly can't. There's no problem with that.
Yeah, I I don't expect that you can take political stance on anything that wouldn't be appropriate. It's just a matter of, this bill was proposed by this uh representative and this representative, and the the purpose of it would be for this, and that's it. You could draw your own conclusions, but if there's uh information as to when a public hearing was going to be, or if uh at least you could speak to your state representative or your state senator and and have um some kind of conversation with them as to what the impact would be if that bill was approved, so.
I I don't want to speak out of line, and it's Rick can cut me off if he wants to as well. But that also requires us to have subject matter expertise to be able to make those summaries that that you're looking for, and so I think that we'd have to talk with our legislative committee about if we have the capacity to make sure that we're giving you thorough and all encompassing updates about what's out there, because we, we sometimes figure out stuffs going on the agenda the week before, the day before. It's hard when you don't have me, your, your meeting's passed, or we can't get it on your correspondence. There's a lot of logistical challenges and then accuracy challenges. Um I think the point's extremely valid, but I wouldn't I'm hesitant, as the person who does a lot of the land use reviews, to say that, I, we could get, we could do it entire, entirely thoroughly without full thought about what that could look like, or what, what gets taken away if that's the priority. Not taken away, but how priorities shift.
Do we have anything else to add to this discussion at this point? Hearing nothing. Rick, I guess uh as they say, the ball's in your court. And uh we will wait to hear what uh the staff has to say.
Yeah, we'll, we'll present the staff recommendation um probably at the April meeting now um and of the full board. And we'll follow their directives from there, whatever they decide to do from there is is, of course, we'll take. And uh that's why I say it may not come together by May or June, you know, so. But we'll see, we'll, we'll see how they direct us and 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 uh, you know, they may get feedback from other members who are not at this meeting tonight. And um who who might have read the memo, got, have an opinion, and talked to their CEO, and I might get questions before the meeting or at the meeting um uh that we haven't heard tonight, so we'll see.
Thank you very much, Rick.
Well, thank you, appreciate your time.
I think I'll move on to uh our roundtable discussion, and this evening, I think I'd like to begin with uh Ginny.
Okay.
You know why, right?
Yeah, but I'm gonna wait until the end. Interesting proposals coming for the commission. Since I've been on, I've never had a membership club, a private citizen. Apparently, uh entered into a lease for the first floor of a downtown uh building that had been a sushi restaurant that uh closed, and uh he wanted to have a membership club, so he filled out some paperwork and came before the commission. And he was just couldn't get across his point as to what the purpose of this membership club is for. And we had to, you know, what's, what's the common denominator? Is it N S S T? Is it's, you know, you're all interested in the same sports? You know, do you have some hobby that you all participate in or whatever? And he finally, and so we, we continued, and he finally came back like two meetings later when he, it was on the agenda again with an attorney who was able to explain to us, this is going to be for a certain um group of uh of uh eth- a certain ethnic group, and it was just a social club, but he just couldn't get across the point. And we did after uh discussing it among the uh commission that yes, it would be okay, it was certainly something that would be allowed under one of our uses. And the only thing that I had said to him was, you're not going to have some kind of door system where you have to punch in a code to get in. That door is gonna be kept open all, all the time. Not just from exiting, but entering. And he said, yeah, well, the door will be unlocked. And it's funny because on the other side of the, to the left of that building is parking lot. On the other side is a longstanding social club for another ethnic group. So it was funny that there had been the same area, but that was the thing that we were concerned about. This thing predates zoning regulations. It's been there for years and years and years. So um we really can't, if it's uh allowed under uh one of our uh land, land uses, we cannot deny this, but we also want to get across the point to the gentleman that you've got, everything's gotta be above board here. Uh no, um nothing going on behind closed doors. So um, but we did approve a medical building on River Road uh on the way to Stratford. Um we finally, after two thousand, since a project for property that's on River Road that currently houses a marina is finally been approved after multiple uh resubmissions because property was acquired over the years for uh an updated marina and a hundred and ten apartments, thirty five condos, uh a medical building and a restaurant. So uh what one of the commissioners had said, this has been on uh in front of us for years, get it done now, okay? So no more fooling around, no more postponements. So what we, we are reviewing a proposal for an apartment building downtown for nineteen apartments. We are reviewing a proposal by McDonald's to open up a, a place on uh Bridgeport Avenue. There was a proposal and another part of River Road, fifty one condos that we denied. And um they are going to be, I guess, coming back with a scaled down version, which we had asked them to do right from the get-go. We also had a very contentious public hearing for um a side street off of of Bridgeport Avenue, which is uh like a stone's throw away from the Stratford line, for forty one condos. That's the acreage isn't that much, but they had, they positioned five buildings on there for a total of forty one condos. The property right now has one house on the street that was, it's in a deplorable condition. And the rest of the property goes back, and that's, they said, well, forty first condo would be the house on the street, which would be all totally renovated, and in the back, all that property, they would put up uh five buildings, and they literally were going from property line to property line. And you could probably touch the neighbor's house, and and of course, the neighborhood was up at arms, and we just, you know, tried to be very objective about the whole thing, but they, by the questioning, uh they decided to withdraw and uh after the opening of the public hearing. So one of the um, the most uh last Wednesday night, we had to have a public hearing and a decision because two years ago, we had enacted a moratorium, one year moratorium on the acceptance of applications for retail recreational, retail sales of recreational cannabis. And then a year after that, we extended it, and that, for another year, and that uh moratorium was um uh going to expire last Friday, March twenty ninth. So on the twenty seventh, we had put it on the, accepted that proposal by the commission to take some action on that. Uh at the beginning of March, we did the legal notices that were required, we had it on the agenda, we had a public hearing, we had three local residents show up to give us their comments, and a gentleman from out of town who does, has uh facilities uh came also, and um when they, after we closed the public hearing, it was on later on, on as old business, we had a discussion, and I stated clearly, my position was that we do not need this um a facility like this in town. The mayor was definitely against it. We had Alderman came, uh also had spoken, but when we came to take a vote, it turned out to have a three-three tie. So the motion did fail to pass. And as of yesterday, um. Applications can't come in and we did have one come in. However, um, staff quickly and uh learned that they did not even have a license, then even a provision one. So that may delay any action on that, but. Our uh charge now is to have a subcommittee be appointed by me. To sit down and look at the zoning map and come up where we would allow a facility. And um, of course, it, we would have to be, take care of that. Uh, and that's what staff is doing now is researching what, is there any restriction in the zoning uh state statute as to where it cannot be? And if not, we will come up with a list of places it cannot be. So um. So that was a disappointment because and one of my points was ten years ago. We as a commission denied having medical marijuana dispensaries in town or manufacturing or anything. Why all of a sudden? Did three of the commissioners feel that this is okay? One was on the commission back then. Um, and with some of the testimony from people that had uh. Attended the public hearing was that while the state is going to give us three percent, however. That's not just something that all that money goes in the general fund of a town. It goes. To um, to, it has to be restricted for certain uses. So um, I had said, I don't feel that that. That's a burden that we don't need to have is someone you now having to track all this and, and plan programs. If they're not already existing or qualify an existing program. So um. That was not a fun meeting to have. So um, but the last thing is um. The chair mentioned, um, I did send out an email to um. All of the people on the regional planning commission and to staff of NV cog. To invite them to take a tour of Shelton on a bus tour. And that is, would be on April twentieth. I've only heard from staff of NV cog. I had a couple other. Uh, people from NV cog indicate they would have loved to, but they're not in town that weekend, which is understandable. But if you have not um, replied and you tend to go, I would just appreciate some, an R S V P. Um, the city is uh providing transportation from. The commuter parking lot at the uh, south end of uh, uh Waterbury. And anyone who, I thought from Beacon Falls in south. If they want to just come to Shelton, they can meet the bus downtown at Farmer's um Market. And then we would commence our tour. Um, the gentleman who is the chairman of the Shelton Economic Development Commission. Is um, uh, president of Modern Plastics in Shelton, long. Longstanding uh operation that was founded by his grandfather years ago in Bridgeport. And they've been in Shelton now for a while. He um, when I mentioned it to him. Uh, and asked if he would collaborate with me on this particular project, he jumped at it. And said, I'd be more than welcome, um, happy to, to go on the tour with you and, and talk about things. And point out what he calls the highlights or the hidden gems in Shelton. And uh, he said, I, I would be more than happy to host all the attendees for launch at his um plant and to show people. Through the plant. It won't be in operation that day, but uh, he knows this is inside and out. So at least you could see what they do. Um, they had. Uh, at the beginning of COVID, jumped into. Production of safe face masks and I think it was like almost a, a seven twenty four operation there for a while. And uh, so I just hope that if you haven't already considered it, that you will and um. You can join us that day. I think it would be a lot of fun and um.
Ginny, excuse me, uh, do we have a R S V P date?
Yeah, I had asked on the. We find mine.
Mr. Harder, I think you said the tenth.
You know what? And then I went back and I said, it's a little bit too early, maybe. I put that it's on the uh fifteenth, April fifteenth. Monday before. Yeah, Monday, April fifteen. That's the last version.
All right, so. Uh, commissioners that may uh hopefully uh will attend. Um, would you, you, you sent, uh, you sent out a notice to everybody, right Ginny?
Yeah, it was an email on Friday, March fifteenth, uh, about quarter ten in the morning. And I've, I've got all the emails that's um, Savannah Nicole was kind enough to supply to me. None of them got rejected. So I'm assuming they all went through, but um, I, I do want to follow up on that.
Yep.
For those who aren't here tonight.
Well, I, I commend you Ginny. I think this is awesome. And this is the kind of thing. That I think uh is greatly needed uh by our council of governments. All right, uh, let's, let's move on, um. Uh, Lori, what have we got?
So right now we're working, we're working on, um. I have an application from the town before me for another industrial park, industrial park three. So we're doing the subdivision for that. Going to be a twelve lot subdivision over there. With um, three hundred sixty five parking spaces and that doesn't include all the parcels over there. That's the old. Um, uh, chemical and all that down there in Nogatuck Elm Street. So we're working on that. We just updated our subdivision regulations to include industrial parks. We didn't have any uh. Regulations regarding industrial parks at that time. So that's before my commission. Um, we have an application possibly coming in in the next couple of months for the Peter Paul property. Hershey property on New Haven Road that's been vacant for many years now. So hopefully this will finally happen. We had a big application inland wetlands application before us for originally four hundred sixty seven residential apartment. Within eight buildings and a clubhouse, which was reduced down throughout the process. To two hundred seventy one units with twenty four townhouses and a clubhouse. That was denied and we just uh received the appeal today. So we'll have fun with that one. Um, and I mean, we have a lot going on, but those are the big ones. And with the bus tour, I have that all written down. I just have to um, check my schedule for Saturday. But um, otherwise I'm hoping I can go to that.
Love to see you there. Uh, Kurt, anything from uh your community?
Middlebury. Yeah, I just muted myself. I guess I was unmuted. Um. Middlebury uh usually has a uh, a busy schedule, n- nothing boring. Um, one thing out of the ordinary, I'm not going to bore you with all the other things, but one thing out of the ordinary is our first dog park that's being um. Uh, i- i- it is being uh. I guess proposed by um, our Middlebury Land Trust. They have a lot of uh former water company property. Part of it was deeded to the town of Middlebury. Within its uh jurisdiction or i- its uh town boundaries and part of it was uh deeded to Nogatuck. Both put it into the land trust, but uh, the Middlebury Land Trust is taking a revolutionary uh road. Nichols Road that actually makes its way into Nogatuck and they're taking a portion of that and they're proposing a dog park. Uh, kind of the first time that it, uh, that, that the land trust ever got involved in something of that nature. Um, I guess we're, we're overshadowed by uh Nogatuck's very large uh dog park that I guess is pretty successful. So we're, we're, we're going to see how that goes. There's a public hearing, uh, probably uh scheduled probably for May. Uh, there's some opposition in the neighborhood. I've already heard from some of the neighbors, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. Our, our.
Yeah, Curtis, did you say about the Cheshire one?
Uh, no, no, Nogatuck has a, a dog.
Okay, Cheshire has an excellent one. That we sometimes can uh. On a way between uh West Hartford and coming back to Shelton, well, my husband will go back road and if our border collie is with us, he knows exactly where it is. And it's a really nice facility, two big playards, um, divided by uh chailing fence for the uh two different sized dogs.
So maybe you should come to the public hearing in May and try to dispel some of the concerns of the residents. It's actually my, my old neighborhood because I, I grew up on the Nogatuck Middlebury line. And this is about a half mile from uh my old family compound. In fact. Our property uh is uh a contiguous property with the water company property. So um. Again, people, when something is new, people get uh. You know, they sometimes uh can overreact, but um. We're, we're trying to do our due diligence and try to get the information to both parties. Hopefully everything.
They may be concerned about barking and everything, but I'm telling you when our, uh, there's a pack of dogs running around, they're not really barking. They're just running around like nuts, chasing each other. And if somebody has a ball, they're at, right at, you know, running after the ball. So if they're, they're too busy. We have, they're not standing there barking as if you had a uh, a dog kennel in town. And then when we bring our dog to a dog kennel, you could hear the dogs barking as soon as you hit, turn off the road. So.
Last month we approved, or two months ago, we approved a doggy daycare and um. Uh, this is a, a, but a, yeah, a, a daycare for dogs right along the interstate. On the Southbury line and this is their third stab at it and s- a, a very successful business for them. I guess people, people, I, all of us, when I was a kid, our dogs stayed outside in the doghouse. Nowadays, they're part of the family, including our old dog.
Mine's right down here.
Well, Kurt, good luck with that and I, I'm all in favor of it. I'm a dog person. No apologies. All right, um, Margus, what's going on in Plymouth?
Well, I have, it's, uh, it's, I have to report that we have actually. Getting close to implementation on two projects that were originally approved in two thousand and eight. Takes a while. One is a volume. To construct and operate a volume reduction plant. Uh. They originally proposed in two thousand and eight. Uh, it went into D E E permitting. It had an extensive amount of time in D E E permitting. It went through a first, a first permit and then now a second permit. And now there's a new operator and they've been able to get site plans, special permit approval to actually construct the project. In uh, right a, right along the railroad line, eh, next to the. Uh, where inland fuels has its plant. So it's actually making progress that it's getting closer to reality. And the other project that's now getting close to uh reality is. A housing project for fifty nine uh townhouse style apartments. Uh, it was originally proposed as in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and six. Then it got reapproved in two thousand and eight. Then it got, it changed from being a senior residence development. Then it became a condominium to garden apartment development. And now it's turning into a, a rental with. Uh, that's being funded by the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. And we're getting close to actually seeing some new housing come to the town of Plymouth.
Is this uh affordable housing?
There are some affordable units and there, and, and I, I'm going to be signing off on a, a slight redesign. To allow what was a two story unit to become one story. So those are handicapped accessible. For people that are all one level and rather than being a two level, it's going to be now on one level. It's a slight modification in the, the layout, but it's not anything significant.
Well, good luck with that.
So we're happy to see something coming.
Absolutely.
And so is the property owner, that he actually found someone who's finally wants to buy and build his project. So.
Wonderful. A- as a neighbor to Plymouth, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's quite enough right now.
Thank you very much. Um, Bob.
What do you got? Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, we uh, we continue to work on the P O C D. We have our legal looking at the R F P. That we're going to be going out with very shortly. Um, kudos to the cog for um, in SN in particular for giving us some hiring leads. Um, we uh recently uh hired an admin person and we, we have a um. Uh, young planner that we're looking at very seriously. Uh, so uh, again, that seems to be moving along well and we're trying to get back to our. Uh, pre-COVID staffing levels. Um, a, a lot of um, development going on, particularly in the downtown. I probably mentioned it before. With a lot of um revitalization of vacant office space to apartments. We're also starting to see trends in other areas in the downtown restaurants in particular. Um, the old uh Dresches has reopened under a new name. Doreos is uh opened and. And we also have a couple of new restaurants on uh, on Grand Street. And uh, kind of an eclectic offering of uh, of food. So. Um, if you're, you're down that way, I would uh suggest you check it out. Uh, Ginny, on, on the uh, on the tour, I don't think I'm going to be able to make it. I, I, I believe that's uh. Saturday, the twentieth, um, I have a commitment to um, Earth Day.
Oh, I understand.
To be exact, but uh, uh, certainly um. You know, wish you, wish you well with it. That's, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you very much, Bob. All right, I, I guess I'm last. Um, the only thing that I really would like to. Uh, share with you this evening is uh, we have our uh regular zoning commission meeting. Uh, coming up April eighth and it is looking like it will be a very contentious meeting. Uh, this is the second go around uh for a piece of property. Uh, that has been trying desperately to get a, an approval for uh elderly house or uh. Uh, retirement housing. And um, it's eighty four units they're proposing. Um, it's, it originally it was going to be for individual. Um, apartments kind of clustered together. Uh, now that the proposal is looking like um, a, a. Certain number of buildings with apartments in the buildings. Uh, I can tell you that the neighbors are uh, going to be turning up. I think the last time this came before us. Uh, we had over two hundred residents who were opposed to this. So I have no idea what our meeting is going to look like on the eighth, but uh. Uh, it's, it's apt to be very contentious. Um. So that's all really I have uh to offer this evening. Um, I don't know, Emily, uh. NV cog updates, uh, is, is Savannah Nicole still here? Yep, yep, she is. I don't know who wants to address this.
I, I'll, I'll make one comment and then I'll let Emily announce an event that we're putting on, on Friday for our planners and, and land use staff and our agent. That we're very excited about, but we will follow up in our um, email correspondence, but Commissioner Harder, to your point about. Um, your cannabis regulations, um, there is something in the statute and you sparked it in my memory. So I was doing a little research. About what you may, um. So it's any municipality may establish restrictions on the proximity of cannabis establishments. To a particular list of uses that are outlined in another section of the statute. So we'll send both of those references to you in our follow up email so that um, you'll, you can see and, and talk with your land use staff. About different um, uses you could um, consider if that's what the commission is amenable to um. Regulating around. So I just want to make that, of course, of course. So that's my point. And then I'll let Emily talk about our.
Actually, actually, before you leave that, that issue, I, I actually had recalled something else. Um, and SN, just maybe you can help me out here. Didn't we get a superior court decision recently about what towns, if towns are going to allow it? How much they can regulate it? I thought the judge's ruling was that, that. Towns wouldn't be allowed to regulate in any way that is different than they regulate liquor stores or package stores or, or the like.
That, I, 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 I'm not sure of the um. Um, court decision that you're talking about, but that is in alignment with the way that we've been interpreting the statute and the direction we've received from the state. So my, and the section that I'm referencing is the liquor license, the way that it's written in the cannabis statute pulls you to the chapter. Um, that is liquor control. So that, that's in alignment perfectly with uh, our interpretation.
Okay, thanks.
Turning it over to Emily. Turning it over to Emily.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, yeah. So as, as SN said before, we, I'm, we are community planners hosting an event this Friday. It is our accessibility, accessibility site plan lunch and learn. We will be having guest speaker Bill Volker, F A C P, and the previous town planner for the town of Cheshire be our speaker there. And we're excited to announce that we partnered up with the Connecticut American Planner Association to provide one point five C M credits. So planners there are able to have the opportunity to get those credits. Um, and it'll be very interactive. We have a full house, full registration. So we're excited to have really good conversation, um, site planner reviews and how to incorporate accessibility into that review.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Emily.
Where's the event going to be?
It's going to be at NV cog and I want to thank the borough of Nagatuck for sharing a site plan with us. So wouldn't it be possible to talk about site plan review without site plans? So.
Um, anything else, uh, as far as, uh, updates?
I just want to mention anyone that is, um, going to participate in the bus tour, visitors are welcome. So if you have a spouse or a good friend or you feel there's somebody that you know, they're more than welcome to join in. This.
Awesome.
Okay.
Ginny, I can't thank you enough for all the work that you did with this. And I think it's wonderful.
I used to be a party planner.
Very good. Well, I don't know that we have anything else on the agenda that we could, could, uh, consider this evening. So, and we don't have a quorum to, uh, vote on a, uh, adjournment. So, uh, as chairman, I'm going to say that we are adjourned. Uh, and, um, whether we see each other in June or not, I do not know. We'll wait for an update from Rick.
Very good.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, oh, good night all. I, I want to thank you all for attending and, uh, you, you guys are awesome. You really are. And you're quite well, uh, burst in, in everything that you do and you are appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.